Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the May 17th work session of the Salisbury City Council. We have two items on the agenda today, so it should not be a long meeting. But before I get started, I would like to welcome a new face, a new old face to the work session. Mayor Day has joined us, and it's good to see him. And I'm sure we'll give him about a minute and a half to say something later.
Thanks, Jack.
You're welcome. Before we start, I would like to discuss one thing with everyone. I spoke, Julie and I were speaking today, and we had a and there's an issue that we have to correct, and I'm going to correct it now. During the last couple of meetings that we've had, both regular council meetings and work sessions, the chat box has been open during the meeting. And people have been commenting and putting questions and things up there, which is very distracting. And if we were doing it at the government office building, we would only take comments after the meeting is done relative to the agenda items. And that's what we're going to do from now on. Because I have to admit, I was a little bit, they were flying up in the last work session, and it was very distracting. So that's how we're going to operate it. And please save your comments or questions till the end, and we'll have, we'll open up the chat box then. Okay? Thank you, everyone. Okay, first up on the agenda today, we have Fire Chief John Toll talking about a grant acceptance and appropriation. Chief, good to see you.
Good to see you. Good afternoon. Thank you. What you have for you is a budget ordinance asking to accept additional funding from FEMA. If you recall back in November, we submitted two projects to FEMA in reference to COVID expense reimbursements. And part of that program under the Robert T. Stanford Disaster Relief was that FEMA would award our projects at 75%. And then the additional 25% came from Wycom County Health Department through the CARES Act. Well, since then FEMA has selected our projects to award at 100% of the costs. So what you have is the ordinance asking to accept the $36,342.89, which equates to the 25% that came from the Health Department. Now, with that, part of this is, once we accept the money from FEMA at 100%, we'll have to reimburse the county back the 25% from the CARES Act to go back to the County Health Department for them to fund additional projects as they see fit.
Thank you, Chief. I'll open the floor for questions, comments. And please let me know at the end if you're willing to move this forward. Mr. Boda?
No questions or comments asked.
Thank you. Ms. Jackson?
No questions or comments moving forward.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
No questions or comments. Please move it forward.
Yeah. This is Gregory.
No questions or comments. Move it forward.
Thank you. Mrs. Nichols, please put this on the next agenda. So we can take care of it. Chief, thank you for, as always, for taking advantage of these grants and Assistant Chief Gladwell, thank you. We appreciate everything you do.
Thank you.
Next up on the agenda, we have the Faith Baptist Church Annexation Agreement Amendment and Department of Infrastructure and Development Director Amanda Pollak will take us through that. Good afternoon, Amanda.
Hi, good afternoon. So the Faith Baptist Church property was annexed in 2007 along with some adjacent properties. And a few months ago, we talked at a work session just as a discussion item about restating their annexation agreement to make it consistent with current annexation agreement terms. And specifically, back in 2007, there were some development assessments that were on a per-unit basis that we don't do anymore. Now it's on a per-acre basis. So it would result in a different total amount of development assessment fees. Additionally, there's a concept development plan in their annexation agreement that is outdated and is probably not going to be what ends up happening in the development. So we've looked at restating the entire annexation agreement. So that'll bring it with current terms, and it will remove that concept development plan. Additionally, we've put in some new concepts to incentivize development and try to make sure that development happens within a certain timeframe. So I'm going to turn it over now to Michael Sullivan, so he can go through all of the details of what's changed in the amended agreement.
Thank you, Amanda. Good afternoon, members of the council. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, you're fine.
Excellent. So in the 2007 annexation agreement executed by Faith Baptist, among other things, were two development assessments. One that called for a $3,000 per-unit development assessment, and then another that called for a $2,000 per-unit development fee assessment. Instead of those two development assessments being charged to the property owner, development assessments calculated by the total acreage being annexed into the city, which in the aggregate amounts to a $399,920 development assessment is proposed under the amended and restated annexation agreement. That development assessment, per the proposed terms, is broken down into four quarters. The first 25% of the development assessment is due 12, within 12 months of execution. Meaning that no matter what happens with the property in terms of development or anything else, a development assessment in the amount of $99,980 is due to the city. Within 18 months from the date that the amended and restated annexation agreement is executed, a comprehensive development plan for parcels 184 and parcel 1, excuse me, and parcel 40 will be submitted for review, consideration, and approval by the City of Salisbury Wycom County Planning Commission. That does not include parcel 182. Parcel 182 will be retained by Faith Baptist and is not planned nor otherwise proposed for any type of future development. The remaining three quarters of the development assessment is then subject to a categorical system of waiver whereby the development of the annexed property within certain periods of time is rewarded by the waiver of a 25% portion of the development assessment. So breaking the development assessment down into four quarters of $99,980, which totals the total development assessment due under the amended restated annexation agreement, a waiver system is provided as follows. If one-third of all buildable space on the annexed property, in this case, parcels 184 and 40 is developed within 36 months from the date of this agreement, the city will agree to waive $99,980 worth of the development assessment. If, after 48 months from the date of the annexation, the amended restated annexation agreement, two-thirds of all buildable space on the annexed property is developed for use, an additional $99,980 of the development assessment will be waived. And finally, if all buildable space on the annexed property find as parcels 1 84 and parcel 40 is developed for use within 72 months from the date the amended and restated annexation agreement is executed, then another $99,980 worth of the development assessment is waived. Meaning, if all three of those development milestones are hit by the developer of those two parcels, then the total development assessment paid to the city will be the $99,980 development assessment due and payable within 12 months from the date the amended and restated annexation agreement is executed. To give you some background, this is the second time the city has been approached by a property owner asking for revision to an annexation agreement with respect to property that was annexed in the aughts, the period of 2001 through 2009. And the underlying basis for the request has been the same in both scenarios. The methodology by which development assessments were calculated thereafter imposed upon the developer was effectively an economic obligation that was contingent upon the size and scope of development at the property. Said differently, the more the property was developed, the more the developer would have to pay in the form of a development assessment. And what happened in both scenarios undergirding the request for amendment to these old but still existing annexation agreements was the same. The properties are unmarketable because development at the site is infeasible due to the scaling of the development fee assessments imposed on the owner and developer of the property, making it cheaper. And more or less, the only feasible route for a developer or property owner to take was to do nothing with the property, to have gone through annexation and thereafter stopped, making no use of the property that was annexed. Here, the city says, effectively, the more you develop it, the faster you develop your property, the less you will pay in development fee assessment. It is a, it is a, at least in my opinion, a dynamic that serves to benefit both the interests of the property owner and the long-term interest of the City of Salisbury with respect to the expansion and addition of its property base. Amanda, have I covered all of the critical portions of the amended restated annexation agreement? Is there anything I've left out for discussion?
No, you covered it, and I'll just add one more thing to the things you said at the end is, as Michael had said previously, the first quarter of the payment would be due within 12 months. That was not part of the previous annexation agreement. So this one where it was annexed in 2007 has not had to pay any development assessment, since it was all based off of number of units and the actual building permits being issued. So this also gives the city some ability to collect some development assessment within a specific amount of time. And so this is going to be what we hope to do going forward to make it a standard, is to put in this type of a timeframe in other annexation agreements. But no, Michael, you covered it all. Thank you.
Thank you. And I should, I should remind the council that if the development milestones set forth in the amended and restated annexation agreement are not hit, then the waivers do not apply. And before approvals can be sought or permits requested and issued for development at the site, then the associated development assessment, the one that's due based on the period of time that has lapsed between the execution of the agreement and when the permit or approval is requested, would be due. So if nothing has happened, and the first time any permit or approval is sought for development of the property 54 months from now, then that means that $99,980 multiplied by two would be due and owing. And if, in that hypothetical, the entire buildable space on the annexed property was developed for use between 54 months from the date of the agreement and 72 months, that final $99,980 development assessment would not be due. Which I offer as an example to show you that this is a fluid scale in terms of applying the waiver for the development assessment.
Okay, I think I get it, and I've made some notes. And just quickly, if we would go on the way it was, the total, the total that we would have in assessments would be $400,000, correct? Or this $300,000?
If we were not to amend the annexation agreement at all,
Right.
based off of my calculations, using the concept that was proposed for development back in '07, I actually think the development assessment would have been somewhere in the range of $700,000.
Okay, so the, what I'm referring to is the, under the new amendment,
Correct.
the maximum, once every, if everything is developed, the total fee would be $99,000.
Correct.
Okay. And if they did it, if you look at it, they're saving roughly $200,000.
If they meet all the milestones, they're saving roughly $300,000.
$300,000, okay. That's fine. That's, okay. So that works. And the other question I had was, obviously, this has got to go back to the planning commission. Correct?
Actually, I think it just goes back to public hearing at city council level. Is that right, Michael?
Correct. In reality, the procedures governing the annexation of property by municipal corporations like the city have already been fulfilled in this particular case. The property has been annexed. It is currently part of the municipal limits of the City of Salisbury. Accordingly, this annexation agreement is no different than another development agreement entered into by the City of Salisbury with a property owner or developer governing the development of specific property already located within the municipal limits of the City of Salisbury. Accordingly, if the prior practice and procedure of the Salisbury City Council is to approve developer agreements by resolution, then in my opinion, this amended and restated annexation agreement would be adopted via that legislative vehicle. Alternatively, if developer agreements are typically approved and authorized by the city council via an ordinance, then the amended and restated annexation agreement with the Faith Baptist property, i.e. parcels 182, 184, and parcel 40 would be approved through the normal ordinance process. That I would leave to the city clerk for determination.
Gotcha. So the answer is no?
No.
Okay. Questions or comments from the council? And should we move this forward? Mr. Boda?
I like the timetable. I like, I like the way that this is set up. I think this incentivizes development instead of creating a situation like we have where it prevents development. So I support moving this forward.
Thank you, Mr. Boda. Ms. Jackson?
I concur with Mayor and moving forward.
Thank you. Ms. Blake?
I had a question. The plans that we're looking at were the 2006 plans. Is that exactly what's going to be developed today? Like, if they start developing, we approve this, what are they developing?
So at this point...
Oh, sorry.
I was going to say, yeah, they are, they are not going to be held to that plan. So they are marketing the property and looking for a new developer to purchase it. So they will have to come back before the planning commission with a new concept development plan. So that is part of the amendment to this agreement, is to remove that plan from the annexation agreement because it is outdated, and they, they very likely would like to do something different. There is a potential developer who's looked at it, that's talked about, single family, but we haven't seen anything from them yet. So at this point, that plan is outdated and would no longer exist.
Councilwoman Blake, my understanding with respect to the position from the property owner that the existing annexation agreement made the property unmarketable and infeasible for future development actually arose from facts on the ground. Specifically, Pastor Reiner was approached by virtually every interested buyer, it seems, that they were not interested in purchasing the property or moving forward at all with its development unless the terms of the existing annexation agreement could be addressed and modified, which they have been. And this agreement has been submitted to the property owner, and I believe even an interested third-party buyer of parcel 184 and parcel 40 for their review and consideration and comment, which they have provided us before.
So basically, in essence, in the terms that I can understand, we're just basically still agreeing to the annexation, but looking at a different way to develop it with those financial terms.
Yes.
Okay, that... Go ahead and move that forward. Thank you.
Thank you. This is Gregory.
She asked what I was going to ask, so yeah, move forward.
Okay, thank you. And I like the incentive piece of it, rather than having a piece of property sit there and be dead for so many years. And Pastor, I'm sure you, you agree to that, so. Okay. Then Mrs. Nichols, if you'll move that forward as well. And that completes the agenda. And I will now open the...
Jack, Pastor Reiner here. Could I just ask one question before you move forward?
Well, the only thing we're going to go now is do comments. So you're, you can check, you can get your comments.
Okay.
You might as well do it now. So go ahead.
The only question I had, we met two weeks ago and hashed all this out. And the, the one question that I have, and I have to ask it on behalf of the church, is in the revised annexation agreement, we are referred to as the petitioners, and the potential new buyers are referred to as the owners. The, the $99,880 or in $920 that is due in 12 months after this is agreed upon is levied against the new, the new owner, the developer, not the church, because we are not the developer. And we talked about that in that meeting, and I thought we were clear on that. And I'm not sure, that may be what I'm reading here, but I'm not sure. I just needed an answer from Michael on that.
Right now, the initial development assessment in the amount of $99,980 is due from owner. The definition of owner is provided in the first paragraph of the recital. The definition of owner does include petitioners, effectively. This gives Faith Baptist 12 months to sell the property to a third-party developer, specifically to sell parcels 184 and parcel 40. If the current owner fails to make that sale, the obligations related to the payment of the development assessment would apply to owner as it exists in that time period. If you'd like me to go further, I can, but they are not excused from that payment if they are the only owner of the annexed property 12 months from its execution.
That, that puts the church in a very precarious position. And we do have a buyer. We do expect to settle sometime before September. But we've been here before, Michael. We've been, we've been close to settlement over the last seven or eight years, 10 years multiple times and had unforeseen things happen, and we're left with the property, and we're left continuing to pay in in interest about $50,000 a year, and we, we just can't be in that position. I would hope that the council can understand that, that we are not developers. We never intended to develop the property. We've always intended to sell it to a developer. We had it sold the day we bought it, we had it sold. And then, of course, the bottom dropped out of the market and everything went south during the initial annexation period. So if there's something that could be done to protect the church in this, I'd appreciate it.
If, if, if I'm understanding it correctly, this, the way that it's written currently, does not, that does not follow what the amended wording is. Is that correct, Michael?
Correct. That at some point in time, there is responsibility that could be imposed upon the current owner of the annexed property.
I would suggest, then, that we not move it forward until this issue is resolved, obviously. And I don't know how quickly it can be resolved or what the resolution will be. But I don't think, as it's presented currently, it represents the understanding of both parties. Am I correct?
Well, I don't know. If, I don't know if there's room... Michael would have to answer this. I don't know if there's room for some kind of of change or protection for the church. He would have to be able to, he would have to, I guess he and Amanda and others would have to work together to try to find that out. I'm just, I'm just saying that we've been through this, and I know the city council is aware of of how long we've been dealing with this. We've been dealing with it longer than any of you have been on the city council, and appreciate all that the city's been able to do for us and their patience. And it's not because we haven't tried our best to sell the property and have it developed, but we are not developers. And it's, it's out of our... You know, if, if, if this buyer goes away and we don't have a buyer, and then 12 months from now, we have to pay $99,000, and then two years after that, we have to pay another $99,000 for land that's not, that's not being developed, and we're not a developer. It would be, it would be extremely traumatic for the, it would... I don't know what we would do. So...
Pastor, I have a, you know, for a developer, what you're saying is you'd like the developer to pay that $99,000.
Yes, and I'm sure that that's what Michael's intention is in writing this. I would just like the, those fees to be that we would agree that those fees are paid by the developer.
But if I'm the...
Is there a way to...
If I'm the developer, besides buying the property, and I'm responsible for the $99,000, that may hinder your sale as well.
We've already talked with the current buyer about that, and they are in agreement for the $99,000. They, they look at it as it's much better than the $750,000 that it would have been. Or if they chose to go with apartments, it could have been as much as $6 million in fees per unit, because if they built apartments, there would be per unit. And you would build more than 150 apartment units on that land. So all that speculation, of course. We don't, we don't foresee a problem with this buyer. He is moving forward. He's looking at an adjoining piece of property as well. It's just we... Uh, it's just, we, we've been through this so many times. I have to protect the interest of the, of the church. We, we cannot, uh, you know, we, we don't have the resources that maybe some developers would have to, to hold on to things or pay things, but we just don't have that.
Well, I, I think what we need to do, first of all, we're not, the, the council's not in the position to negotiate this. Um, and I think that what, what needs to get done is you need to get back, uh, with Amanda and Julia and the mayor and, uh, Michael, and get the issue resolved so that we can see. Because on the other hand, on the other side of it, um, it's, it's our intent, based on what I read, that this is going to be the program going forward for a, any annexations to encourage people to act. Correct?
Yes, and I agree with that. I mean, I'm not, I'm not opposed to this at all. I'm just, I, I guess I'm just saying under, under the current annexation agreement, as Michael said, we, 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 we had an, we have an incentive to sell the property and have it developed, because we're paying for a piece of property that we, we're not using, and, um, it, it's, we, we didn't, we didn't even anticipate owning this property when we purchased it. We, we needed a few more acres for our property, and then the rest was to be dissolved to a developer. So.
Well, I, I, you know, again, I, we can't resolve it here, but I do, I do have a similar situation that I've had. And that is if you had a short-term loan that was handled over a time of closing, um, they could, they could pay you the ninety-nine thousand dollars to repay your loan, and then you could, you could work that out. I mean, that's just off the top of my head. That's probably maybe one thing you could look at, but again, we're not gonna resolve.
That would require us to take it back to our, to the church too, because I, I can't, I can't, um, I could, can't put the church in a position to be indebted to the city for a hundred thousand dollars uh, without the church's approval to that. Um, so I, I guess.
Okay, well, that's just, that was just a suggestion.
Yeah, I, I-
President?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Can I ask you a couple of questions?
Sure.
Um, one, I just wanna make sure, um, that, you know, when we, when we end up with something before council that, that everyone, um, agrees to the content before it gets to council. Um, you know, not having been involved and not having been here for a year, um, certainly not the last few weeks. Uh, just wanted to, you know, one, confirm that, um, the document that you're seeing is something that all parties have seen prior to tonight. Can we just confirm that?
Yeah.
Pastor, is that, is, is that the document that you've seen?
I've seen that document, yes.
Okay, all right. So this is an agreement that, that all parties had agreed to before it got to this point. Um, that, that's question number one. Question number two is, you really, uh, a question that, um, you know, is rhetorical, maybe doesn't need an answer tonight, and again, perhaps if it's your wish, council and the administration can, can take this into, uh, a discussion and bring it back. But, um, question number two is, you know, if, if there is no time, uh, sensitive, um, encouragement or incentive, if nothing, uh, initiates action, um, such as creating a financial incentive connected to time, then what, what exists to change the condition that we've had since two thousand, what was it, six? Um, seven, uh, where, whereby no one acts because of disincentives such as, you know, fees, uh, the market, whatever. Uh, what, what is there if not that tool to say, hey, everybody, let's get our stuff wrapped up. Let's get our stuff together, um, and let's act. Um, you know, I, I don't, obviously, nobody wants to put, uh, the church in a position, and I'm speaking a little bit on behalf of staff that, you know, has worked without me, uh, involved. But, um, no one wants to create, uh, negative in, uh, negative pressures on the church or anyone else, but rather to create pressure to, to induce action. And, um, we haven't seen action, not for lack of trying, I think, uh, but for lack of, as, as, uh, the pastor identified, and as Michael mentioned and Amanda mentioned, you know, for, uh, market conditions and the disincentives that existed in the previous agreement. Um, so an agreement that's fair, um, an agreement that incentivizes action is kind of where we wanna be moving forward. Now, none of us were here back when, um, back when the market was what it was and the conditions to create annexation agreements like the one that exists previously existed, but, um, I think we, we can all agree something has to incent action, right? Um, so if, if not a financial incentive connected to time, then what? That's the rhetorical question.
I, I thank you for that, Mayor. Um, and, and you're right. The, the problem that, that I have is that the incentive is, is for the developer. Um, this, this is tremendous incentive for a developer. We are not that. And, and so, uh, and the incentive for us has been, we, we wanna stop paying for, paying for this land and paying the, the interest on this, on this property. We, we owe about a million dollars on it, and, uh, it, it's, it's a hardship for us as a church. So we have an incentive to, and we have done everything to market it. Uh, it's not that we aren't doing as much as we possibly can. So the, the incentives that are, that are, that are proposed here are incentives to a developer. And, um, so I, I would, um, I would just ask that, that we could maybe meet together puts, if nothing else, we'll, you know, we'll, we'll go forward, but, um, be, because I'm gonna have to go forward trusting that this buyer is, I mean, and there's no reason for us not to believe this buyer isn't sincere and that this developer is ready to go, and he wants to, he wants to get permits. He wants to start, he wants to start putting the shovel on the ground immediately. So I'm, I'm pretty certain of that, but, you know, it, yeah, we, we were real, we were real sure in two thousand and seven, and here we are in two thousand and twenty-one, so.
Well, I, I think, uh, what I stated before is probably true. We're not gonna resolve it on this call. On, and I think that, uh, we should probably not move it forward as it is, because you're not, uh, one of the parties is not, uh, in agreement. So, uh, I would ask that, uh, you, mayor and staff, if you would take a look at it, see if you can come to an agreement. Uh, it, you know, I, I don't know what to do other than that. Um, so, uh, Pastor, I'm sorry that it isn't to your satisfaction, but I understand our, our position and, um, I think we need, we need to have some further discussion. Mr. Mayor, are you okay with that?
Um, you know, I, I think the council should do it, uh, what you're comfortable with, um, but I, I just can't imagine that there's, uh, an alternative. Um, there may, there very well may be, so if you want us to work at it, uh, we can certainly work at it. Um, I think everyone acting in good faith here understands that, um, the, you know, the, the desire and the goal is to, um, help the church, um, help the city and the city's taxpayers, and, uh, and ultimately to, uh, add housing stock um, and to, to see development happen. So we all want the same things. Um, and usually that means there's an answer out there. Um, so, uh, you know, your call on how we get there, if, um, if we need more time to, uh, meet again and work through it, um, that's, that's your call. Um, but, uh, like I said, um, I, I think we've got to come to some conclusion that uses time as an incentive, uh, and uses, uh, the, the reduction in fees as an incentive.
Mr. Boulard, I see you had your hand up.
Is there, and I, I had dropped out for a bit, it's a connection. Um, is, is there a way to put a line in there? At, you know, as, you know, the, the clock starts upon sale or, uh, you know, that it's
That, that-
To specify that way?
I'd be in total agreement with that.
Michael, does that have any possibility where you could?
Uh, of, of course it does, and, uh, you know, we'll comment as requested by the council for purposes of our discussion right now. Uh, but first I'll point out that, yes, this was provided in advance. Second, with respect to section eight, C, two little I, capital A, provides an owner of the development property. The development property is defined, beginning of the agreement, to be parcels one eighty-four and forty. Those parcels that faith that is, has not intended to own, which took quite substantial revision. Because we have already left out parcel one eighty-two from all of the terms conditioning payment of some fee for its development. That came as a result, very significant and substantial conversation about this, which included the proposed buy. Hence, why it says within twelve months from the date of this agreement, owner of the development property, sure, council president and other members of the council. We can, of course, mend this agreement to provide whatever you may like in which the church is agreeable to. But in terms of taking the time to make sure that the church's financial obligation with respect to fees associated with the annexation of three parcels it currently owns, parcel one eighty-two, which is currently owned by the church, is not intended for development, is specifically excluded from all terms addressing payment of development assessment. So if you'd like to go one step further and say that for so long as the church owns any of this property, it will not be responsible for any fees associated with its annexation, we can do it. But right now, it certainly presupposes that the buyer that joined our last discussion about the terms of this agreement would close on its purchase of the development property, find its parcel one eighty-four and parcel forty within twelve months from the date the agreement is executed. I'll keep him, I'd like everyone to keep in mind to follow. Since this property was annexed, no annexation fee has been paid whatsoever to the city. Almost a decade and a half. Two, there have been no municipal real property taxes paid to the city. So by all means, we can do the belt and suspenders approach and say that for so long that the church owns the property, the development assessment timeline will not start, nor will the church ever be responsible for any payment at all. Alternatively, we can move forward with exactly what we discussed. And that was twelve months from the date of this agreement, property will be sold, which case the buyer would pay that development assessment due within twelve months of the agreement's execution. If not, then the owner of the property will be responsible for it. Moreover, no development can occur within uh, forty-eight months if the development assessment that was due within thirty-six months hasn't been paid. That wouldn't be owed by the church, mind you. That would be owed by whoever purchased the property for its development and wanted to develop. The only thing the city is saying is that effect, is effectively, development's assessment will be due twelve months from the date this agreement is executed. Everything else can be passed on until sometime whenever the property is sold and, uh, uh, applied for development of some sort. There's no requirement that the church has to pay the rest of the development assessment, just whoever develops the property. And like I said already, that one specific provision has been carved out to say the owner of the development property, just like the rest of the agreement has been carved out to say the church won't owe any assessment for anything associated with parcel one eighty-two, which is why I got here. Because we had discussed this. So if you'd like to pause it, be back, serve like the church again, I'd be happy to.
Well, you know, the mayor brought up a good point before. The one thing you wanna do is if we, we don't wanna be sitting here seven years from now with that property still sitting there empty and the church not getting their money and still burdened, uh, you know, I, if I understood it correctly, the way you, you described one of the things, you can close and then you can pay within twelve months the, the fee?
Yes, you could pay, you pay the day after it's executed, you can pay it eleven months, twenty-nine days after the agreement is executed.
But if, but if you don't, and, and the, the, uh, developer backs out, we're, we're back to where we are now.
Yes, and how is that enforced? If eighteen months from now, the property is sold and a third-party developer wants to develop it, and they submit a request for approval or permits to the applicable permitting arm of the city of Salisbury, that request, that permit, that approval cannot be heard unless and until the owed development assessment has been paid. So in reality, they could let it go unpaid, realizing that no permit, no application could be submitted until what's due and owing has been satisfied. So whoever wanted to buy the property thirteen months from now would know they can't move forward unless and until the first development assessment is paid. And secondarily, that their milestone for development assessment waivers is time crunched by twelve months, the period of time taken between when the agreement was executed and when the property was eventually sold for sale in development by a third party. So in essence, this does not obligate the church to pay this development assessment. What it says is, is that no development approval or permit can be applied for, nor requested, and certainly not approved until that initial development assessment is paid. And who pays it on behalf of the owner of the development parcel is not the city's concern. All that they're concerned with is that no development approval or permit can be requested until that development assessment is satisfied. But more practically speaking, we discussed the revisions to this agreement with their third-party buyer.
And, and you're right, Michael. We did, we did, we did meet together. The third-party buyer is in agreement with it. But the question, the question I have, it does not relate to the third-party buyer. We go to settlement in three months, and all of this conversation is a mood issue. But if, if that agreement of sale blows up in our face, that's, that's, now we're not talking about a third-party buyer, we're talking about the church, and I think you understand that, so.
Well, is it, is it possible to do this, Michael? Not for on our pit, on our half, but if the pastor goes back to the developer and says, hey, listen, this is, this is the way it has to be, uh, and are you willing to say that you're gonna go through with this and sign in the appropriate period of time, and then the church is protected? Otherwise, there's no deal.
Sure, and I know I'm playing semantics here, but the church does not literally have to be the payer of this development assessment. If the sale does not occur for a period beyond twelve months, what that provision says is- what that provision says is no permit or approval can be requested by the eventual third-party buyer unless that development assessment in the amount of ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars is paid. So no, technically speaking, the church, while the owner of the property, potentially twelve months from the date the agreement is executed, is not necessarily the party that will have to pay it. Instead, they would provide this agreement to any third-party buyer as part of their due diligence. Third-party buyer as part of their due diligence would then ask, have you paid this development assessment? The church, of course, would reply, no, we have not. What does that mean? What it means is, it's under three little i. In the event owner fails to pay any portion of the development assessment in accordance with the terms and conditions set forth in section eight, two little i, capital A through capital D, the unpaid portion of the development assessment shall bear interest at the rate of ten percent. Notwithstanding any term to the contrary set forth herein, the development assessment due and owing the city, including all late charges, shall be paid to the city prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for any building or structure constructed or developed at the development property. In addition, above, it provides that no building permit or development will be issued until all development assessments have been paid to the city. So does that require the church's payment? Not necessarily. Does it mean that no development could occur? If the church didn't pay the ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and eighty dollar development assessment due and owing twelve months, could it still be owner of the development property? The two parcels we have, that we have purposely excluded for purposes of development and responsibility for the development assessment? Yes. Then that developer would have to pay and satisfy everything that's due and owing the city to allow the request to move forward. The alternative is, we can say that no development assessment is due and owing for the property. Timeline doesn't start, nothing happens until the church is no longer the buyer, which that's the option that's being requested.
Can I, can I make a?
Angela, go ahead.
I, I strongly would prefer they just, all parties go back and the wording to the document is worded to all party satisfaction. That would be my recommendation as far as contracts and, and things like that go. Because saying potentially they don't have to pay it, doesn't mean they don't have to pay it. So instead of keeping the church out there hanging like that, I would prefer if the church, if there's ambiguity or there's any kind of concerns that they may have to end up paying this type of fee if it doesn't sell, that I would, I would strongly encourage all parties go back and meet and, and wait and bring it back to us when it's agreeable to everybody.
And, and I'm seeing head nods from the other council members. So I, I think that's what we're going to have to do because again, we're not going to resolve it. It's a question of, it's a question of pastor and, and Amanda and the team and Michael to see if they can work this out to the benefit of all parties. Because that's the, that's the objective.
Could I ask one further question, Jack, to clarify just something? In the worst-case scenario, Michael, when you said that the church would be liable for the ninety-nine thousand, that, that's one thing because the developer could, in, in fifteen months, a new developer could pick that up easily. But if, if that went on for, let's say, three years, the church wouldn't be on the hook just for ninety-nine thousand. They would be on hook for the second ninety-nine thousand and the third ninety-nine thousand for a total of, of four hundred thousand dollars. Am I correct?
No development could occur at that property until those development assessments are paid. Whether the city would want to take action to collect on development assessments that have not been paid because no development has taken place would be a choice the city would have to take. On the other hand, the city would probably want to facilitate development, exactly as we've done already with the terms of the agreement. So given what Councilwoman Blake has proposed and the reaction of Council President Keith seeing nodding heads with respect to revising the terms, something that Pastor Reinhardt can come on and hear and give his agreement to, then I believe that's where we need to go in terms of the next steps. So be happy to arrange for that and move forward to something that provides the security that the church wants to see in terms of its financial obligations for the property that it owns, for the property that it requested annexation of and something the city can also agree to.
Good summation. That's, that's what we're going to do. Okay. So whenever that, whenever you're ready to bring it back, let us know and we will, we will expedite it as quickly as we can.
Thank you, Jack.
Thank you, Pastor. Okay. We are now up for comments for the good of the order. I don't see the mayor on here, I think he had another meeting. Ms. Glanz, would you have a couple of comments? Oh, there's the mayor, he's back. Mayor, comments for the good of the order?
Hey, I'm here. Just wanted to say it's, it's good to be back, it's like riding a bike. So I look forward to joining y'all at the next meeting and hopefully one of these days we'll be meeting in person again.
Yep, thank you.
We'll talk more soon, thanks, everybody.
Ms. Glanz?
Good evening, everybody. Just echo the mayor sentiment, excited to have him back to work. We got, we got down in, in the weeds today, which was fun, missed doing that with him. So other than that, lots of vaccine appointments available, twelve and up. Hope everybody can, can take advantage of that.
Thank you. Mr. Bodo?
He's gone.
He left.
I'm here. I, I didn't do video because it kept cutting out on me. Yeah, I saw the mayor yesterday on Walmart, so that was nice to see him out and about. We were just randomly throwing things in his cart for him. So like he said, you know, looking forward to hopefully soon, meeting back in person and seeing everybody smiling faces.
Thanks, Mayor. April?
I want to thank the city of Salisbury and the Severn Management Company, Acting Mayor Julia Glanz, Julie McCabe of Homes of America and Delegate Pro temp Cherie Sample Hughes for meeting the needs of the residents at Mitchell Landing when they were needed the most. But this is a concern for me. And Jack, you know, you and me are both know I said we needed to discuss this, but when it happened, it kind of threw me off, of course, because I was handling some business with Julia and whatever, trying to get everyone situated. This is just one instance of many concerns in District One that I have questions for. And the questions I have are how often are these developments inspected? How often are our houses, apartments, or any of our structures inspected? And when was the very last time Mitchell Landing had been inspected? Those are some great concerns for me because I'm seeing a lot of living conditions that are uninhabitable in my community, in my district, not just my district, but there are some other places too that I tend to have visited or went in that neighborhood and saw some things. I just need, we just need to sit down and have a discussion and hopefully next week won't be such a busy week for me, where we can actually just sit down and discuss this and, and get with Salisbury Housing and Community and find out, because I, I think we're missing some things and especially when this is a property that was really owned by the city, this concerns me, it really concerns me. And like I said, I thank everybody who played a, a big part in this. I really do thank everybody because the tenants were up to me very cooperative because I probably would have been in the same predicament they would have been or in the same mindset they would have been because they were in a disarray. And they've asked me to thank you all. Every tenant that, a resident that was, that was living in that, that apartment complex, they asked to thank you for what you've done and they're pretty well settled, whatever. And you helped them in so many ways with moving. Homes of America took the initiative with Severn to work together to find them places. Myself called Julie McCabe and asked her, please step in and help us, we need your help. And they did just that. So I thank everybody for what they do, they did, but we need to get on inspections with our, our housing and apartments and our structures here in the city, so. And also, you know, I'm going to say something about COVID and the mask wearing. Yes, the governor has lifted it, lifted the mask wearing, but typically for the people who have had their COVID shots. If you haven't had your COVID shot, please do so, please do so. Because just looking at a person, you can't tell who's had a shot or who hasn't. So I'm, I'm going to wear my mask until I feel comfortable and everyone should. You have that option to either wear it or not wear, but just be mindful of others. Continue to social distance and continue to sanitize as CDC has said. Thank you so much and have a good evening and welcome back, Mayor Day. Glad to see you back.
Thank you, April. Angela?
Just by all means, if you're healthy enough, please donate blood. We're still in an emergency situation, region, and they need O positive the most. Thank you.
Jack, could I do a shout out just one minute? Julia has done a remarkable job being Acting Mayor. She really has done a remarkable job and I have to give it to her. And Julia, continue, continue. He'll be moving pretty soon.
Thanks, April.
Okay. Michelle?
Yeah, I just want to echo the calls for folks to please continue to wear the mask. You know, here in Wycomico County, we're still in the thirty, thirty percentile area for, for vaccinations. So if you aren't vaccinated, please go get yours. If you need help getting to, to a vaccination site, we, reach out, you know, either to myself or another council member, I'm sure one of us would be happy to help you get, get a ride. But please, please get your, get your vaccines and, and be respectful of people who don't feel comfortable going maskless just yet. You know, I've heard some stories of, of, from friends of not being harassed for continuing to wear their mask. And I, I think, you know, you don't know the circumstances. So just be respectful of others and their choices.
Thank you, Michelle. I will tell you, the only thing that I have today is I am looking so forward to Third Friday. I, I encourage everybody, let's all get out and meet down at Third Friday because it's, the weather's going to be nice and it's great, it'd be great to see everybody. So I know the mayor will be down there. I saw a, a note and I think it's going to be really, really exciting. So please join us for, for Third Friday. Thank you all. This, this ran a little longer than I thought, but we got to take care of business. So thank you for your attention and your questions and we'll see you tomorrow morning at eight-thirty for our final budget session. So thank you, everyone, have a great evening. Bye-bye.